Good morning, council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Just looking for if there's any additions to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Reeve, members of council, administration is recommending 9.3.4, community halls meeting request. And 9.6, infrastructure services. And 9.6.1, under infrastructure services, purchase of land, new glen and greater shop.
You said nine, the last one, 9.6?
9.6, creating infrastructure services, and under that, 9.6.1, purchase of land, new glen and greater shop.
Sorry, my pin wasn't going in, and the middle one was, 9. what?
So, 9.3.4 is the first one, community halls meeting, 9.6, infrastructure services.
Yep.
And that's just the header, and then 9.6.1 is the actual item, and it's the purchase of land, new glen and greater shop.
Okay, got that. Any other additions, gentlemen? Okay, seeing that, I need adoption of the agenda with... Thank you, Councilor Cravieak, for adopting the agenda. Any discussion?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Just brought to my attention that the delegation, Glen and Ag Society, they won't be attending today, so that, if we could request that to be deleted.
Okay. Do we need any kind of motion to delete that, or... Stephanie? We do? So, do I, I guess, we'll wait for your... We need another motion, or how do we want to go about doing that? Before we finish with the first motion?
My apologies, Mr. Reeve, have you guys, have you voted on that?
No.
Okay.
Could we not approve the agenda with the amendments? And that will not be on there?
Yes, if all council would approve amending the motion, we could just add the deletion to the original motion.
Okay. I don't think no one will... Everyone's good with that?
Okay.
Good job, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. No, nothing.
If it's not coming up, if you wouldn't mind just...
All, all in favor? It's, that's carried. Yes? Well, we'll try the next one, see how it goes, then we might go by hand voting.
I get a special touch.
All right, I need adoption of the minutes regular meeting of council of May 14, 2024. Thank you, Councilor Swiger, for making that motion. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Yeah, you got to tap on the vote in progress.
Did it work this time?
No.
Everybody come through for you? Yep, there we go, carried. All right, on to seven, development application, 7.1.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is development permit application 2024-D-102 for Norman Laird and Sarah Mackens. The applicant is applying for a major home business to operate a dance studio. The property is located at 800 feet south of the Highway 567 and Range Road 595A intersection, south of Muriel Lake Viewpoint, South Multilot Subdivision on Muriel Lake. Adjacent properties are quarter sections and remnant. The applicant is applying to operate a dance studio in an existing barn which would require renovations. They would have one to three employees, depending on the demand, and they will hold after-school classes until about 9:00 PM, two to three times a week, with up to 12 students per class, and the occasional workshop. An Alberta transportation permit has been issued for this use. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May 7, and we did not receive any response. Our recommendation for development application 2024-D-102 is approve the request for a major home business for a dance studio as a discretionary use as per Part 6, Section 49, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions. As per Section 47.3, Major Home Business, a major home business may utilize accessory buildings while still maintaining the residential use as the primary use on the site. A home business may employ up to three persons who do not live on the site or within the primary residence. The home business may not generate traffic uncharacteristic to the area. Outsourced storage of materials, goods, and equipment on the site shall be directly related to the home business and, at the discretion of the development authority, may require screening or fencing. The display or placement of the premises of a home, oh, sorry, the display or placement of a sign on the premises of a home business shall be restricted to one identification sign, no larger than one square meter, and in the area, and may be indirectly illuminated. Applicable building, electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act, and an Alberta transportation permit is required. Any questions?
Thank you, just looking for a motion, yes, Councilor Fedeav.
Good morning, so, just looking at the estimated project costs for the barn, it's, they kind of roughly figured out at about $120,000?
Through the Reeve to council, yes, that is what they estimate. They have gone through some structural engineering to learn what is required for this renovation.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion to approve that council approves development permit number 2024-D-102 for a major home business for a dance studio on plan 1722969, block 1, lot 1, within southeast 36595, west of the 4th M, as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 47, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Norm Laird and Sarah Mackens, with the following conditions, 1 through 4. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay. Okay, that's carried, thank you. On to development, 7.2.
This is development permit application 2024-D-105 for Paul and Lynn Gullickson. The applicant is applying for an intensive recreation use for campground extension of 50 RV sites. The property is located on Baywood Road, which is Range Road 415A, one mile north of Township Road 630. Adjacent properties are residential lots, quarter section, and remnants. The applicant would like to expand their campground by 50 sites. They currently have 64 permitted sites, and would, this would bring their total to 114 sites. The sites will be approximately 20 by 40, with fire pits, picnic tables, and landscaped. Dumpsters are located throughout the park, which are dumped into a large, larger dumpster at the main residence and disposed of at the Cold Lake dump. They are planning on installing power within two to three years. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May 7, and we did receive a couple letters of concern. The summary of, sorry, on May 21, administration received letters of concern from Cold Lake First Nations and Primco Deney regarding the development permit 2024-D-105 for Paul and Lynn Gullickson for 50-site expansion to their existing campground. A summary of their concerns for this development are septic/blackwater dumping, the proposed mitigation is to require onsite sani dump, campers trespassing into the Primco lands for recreational purposes, and noise pollution. The proposed mitigation is to have Mr. Gullickson install a fence on the north side of the, of his parcel, between his land and the Primco Deney land, and set back the sites further south away from the shared property line. Concerns related to fire safety and the applicant's safety policy, and concerns about it turning into a work camp due to the upcoming construction projects in the area. Referrals were sent to the MD's Infrastructure Services with no concerns returned regarding this development, and a referral was sent to the city of Cold Lake, and we receive, we have not received any response from them. Recommendation for development application 2025-D-105 is approve the request for an intensive recreation use for a 50-site RV campground expansion as a discretionary use as per Part 6, Section 49, and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions. As per Section 69.6 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 1667, the minimum setback shall be front yard 38 meters from the center line of the adjacent public road, side yard 6 meters, rear yard 6 meters. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act, shall comply with consolidated public safety bylaw number 1812 regarding noise and nuisance. As per Section 52 of the Land Use Bylaw Number 1667, outdoor lighting shall be located so that rays of light are not directly, directed at an adjacent site, do not adversely affect an adjacent site, do not adversely affect traffic safety. The developer shall ensure that emergency vehicle access is not obstructed at any time. The campground design and maintenance shall have regard to the Fire Smart Guidebook for Community Protection as amended from time to time. Fire pits shall be approved by the Bonneville Regional Authority. We do have the adjacent landowners here, and Mr. Gullickson has arrived. Do you have any questions?
Oh, well, we just got this letter this morning. I think we should take maybe a 10-minute recess to go read through it in the back, or however long it takes us, and then we'll come back. And then, we have some people that, that want to speak on the list here, so we'll go read this letter, and then we'll come back and we'll convene after that. Okay, welcome back. I believe we have someone here from Cold Lake First Nations that wishes to speak. Are all three of you guys speaking, or just one on behalf of everyone? Okay, and I'm sure Stephanie has let, let you know? Okay, that would be Kim or Nicole? Kim, okay, welcome, Kim, come on up.
Mr. Reeve, if we could just get a quick motion approving the...
Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion, please.
Thank you, Councilor Fedeav, sorry about that, Steph. That council approves, Kim Warnke on, Warnke?
Warnke.
On behalf of the Cold Lake First Nations to address council regarding item 7.2, development application number 2024-D-105, 50-sites campground expansion, and sorry on your name there. Any discussion, gentlemen? Yes, go ahead.
Do you sort of, before we make this motion, can you tell us, like, are you a lawyer, or are you just, like, I'm not sure what you are?
Fair enough. I'm the nation's policy analyst, and I have, joining with me today, Nicole Nichols, our lands manager, as well as Dimitri Scanny, economic development.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Looks like our voting's back on track. All right, that's carried, thank you, go ahead, Kim.
Thank you very much, good morning, Reeve, and to council. Cold Lake First, Cold Lake First Nations also has issues with their technology, so I empathize with you folks this morning. So, as I mentioned, my name is Kim Warnke, I'm the policy analyst for CLFN, and with me today is Nicole Nichols, our lands manager, and Dimitri Scanny from Economic Development. We're here this morning on behalf of Cold Lake First Nations and their subsidiary, Primco Deney, who hold the lands immediately to the north of the property to be discussed as item 7.2 on council's agenda. Thanks to the development officer for bringing the, the letters to the attention of council, and I will note that the administration recommendations remain unchanged after the, the letters have been submitted as part of the package. We did bring us with, with us today copies of both of the letters sent on May 21 by Primco and CLFN for council to review, and want to take you, to thank you for taking the time to do so just now. The development is supported in spirit by both parties, however, there are a few concerns we'd like to bring to the development authority's attention. The first is sewage disposal, and the lack of requirement for the development to incorporate associated infrastructure into the site plans. It is not reasonable to expect visitors with leases ranging from weekly to yearly to dispose of their sewage off-site, particularly as no shared restroom facilities exist, meaning their tanks will fill quickly. While their neighbors are certain the applicants would not approve of any unsanctioned release, the presence of wetlands within the site, combined with the privacy of the sites, increases the risk of illicit dumping substantially. The second concern relates to the timeframe of operation. While our, while our, while all, ooh, RV facilities currently approved for the site indicate a seasonal approval, the applicant's website makes it clear that year-round leases are available. The lack of controls around the operating months raises the risk that the property will become a de facto work camp with or without the operator's knowledge, when the MD clearly anticipates enabling tourism and recreational users. The housing crunch in Cold Lake will soon be exacerbated with the buildout of the CFB hangars for the new jets, and will become boomtime critical should the Pathways Alliance carbon capture project proceed in the timeframe anticipated. This is an issue the CLFN and the city of Cold Lake are already working together to address. Indigenous populations in particular, and vulnerable community members generally, have not historically fared well when similar unmanaged makeshift work camps have popped up. The third concern relates to the containment of guests on the property. It has come to Primco's attention that there have popped up off-road trails connecting this site to the neighbors' parcels in a substantial manner. In one case, a tree has recently been felled on the parcel to the north without Primco's permissions. In another, a boardwalk appears to have been built across the web, the wetland above the property line, and Primco is not aware of a permit from Alberta Environment and Parks to have done so. These lands are used by CLFN members to track, practice their treaty rights, and contain historical gathering spaces on nearby parcels. And given the proximity to the development, of the development to nation lands, excuse me, we would request a perimeter be established to clearly identify the property line for guests. The process of surveying is being undertaken this spring, however, we are currently of the impression that at least two of the existing sites are actually located on nation lands. This is indicated in the image submitted with the letters council now has, which is actually in front of me still, because I did not submit those letters, because you already had them, so I'm glad to pass that to the clerk in a moment. It also appears that one of the existing buildings is in the municipal right-of-way, the road right-of-way to the west of the property. As the map outlining the development area as created by the MD does not appear to acknowledge the sites planned for the northwest corner of the property, we do want to be certain that MD staff are aware of their existence. Primco does not object, however, there are in fact sites planned substantially to the north of the area indicated on the MD staff map. This oversight raises concerns regarding the completeness of the application review. There are a few other concerns which may be addressed between neighbors and will not waste council's time with today. We understand that the campground regulations have been used as a guide for conditions to approval of this development permit, however, the recommendations from administration in today's package fall quite short of the requirements for a campground. We are concerned as the sites applied for today appear from aerial footage to have been used, have been in use since 2009, and there are currently campers on them. The application of the campground regulations would provide a tool for the municipality to ensure a full site review with detailed drawings as completed, and a framework to ensure the long-term success of the project. As summary, both Primco Deney and CLFN feel that, given the scope of the project and the cumulative impacts on the site over time, it is reasonable to request the campground use regulations be applied as conditions to the approval in their entirety. Thank you for your time today, and glad to answer any questions council should have.
Thank you. If I need a speed reader someday, I'm going to hire you.
Sorry, I'm trying to lean over, I'm too short.
It's okay, I'm too tall sometimes. Any questions? I, I had a question, you said that someone is falling trees, are you saying that Mr. Gullickson fell trees on your property?
No, we don't suspect that's the case. We suspect it's, it's folks that are using the area and accessing the lands. And, you know, generally, CLFN doesn't mind, Primco doesn't mind, those lands aren't fenced and haven't been for a reason, they, they are open to the, particularly the CLFN public. But when, when, when boardwalks and trees are being felled by the users of the, the parks, we want to make sure that we're able to maintain, you know, good neighborly relations, and we think that would be supported by maintaining that boundary too. The, the sites currently, and as I mentioned, the, the, in your package, I believe it's page three or four, page, perhaps page four of the background report, there is the initial application as proposed by Mr. Gullickson, has X's indicated up the western side of the property, and so the MD map only indicates kind of the lower section in the southwest corner of the, of the property as the site for the camp sites. And so, because there are concerns with some existing sites being over the property line, as well as that boardwalk being right along the line, we want to make it clear where that recreational property stops and where Primco's lands begin.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Skarson?
Maybe we could just bring up the map of the, because I, I just want to make sure I'm on the same page as you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so this one here, because this, this map here kind of doesn't really, like, it's kind of different than, I'm guessing this one with all the pen marks is where camp sites are at, is that right, Steph? Because it's a little bit different than what's up there right now.
Yeah, this is, this is what we're referring to, and it's, it's a bit difficult to see there, it is dark on the top-left corner there.
Because it looks like the campsite's going all the way up.
All the way up, yeah.
So that's the north, right?
Correct, yeah.
So then...
And so Primco's property is directly to the north of that.
Okay, and then, what, but not to the west or the northwest, or is that yours as well?
I desperately want to point at your map. So, so, to the northwest, no, northwest and the western sections are not Sylven property, Primco property. The section immediately to the north is, and actually...
Where's that clicker?
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, so, yeah, so there are, there are camp sites indicated on the application that go kind of substantially up to the corner here, and then these are the two sites that we're concerned about from the previous application, and this was an approved application, but for whatever reason, it, it appears that it's gone over the property line. We did have one of our lands team go out and GIS mark it over the weekend, and obviously there are, you know, errors in that, but he seemed to think in the tracks, tracks that were, were created by his travels, fairly clearly put these sites that are, that have power and water onto the, the Sylven lands.
So that is over the property line, those ones?
There's, the boardwalk I was speaking of is actually, this area here is, is a very large wetland, and the boardwalk as I was speaking of is, is just along the property line there. Because of the, the inaccuracy, you know, down to the meter level, we've got accuracy two within five meters, but we don't have that GPS accuracy in the course of the last week. We're not certain if it's just inside of their property line, on the property line, or over, it's within that five-meter discrepancy of the, the instrumentation.
So, you know, if you were to put up barricades or, I, the ten is not really to keep people out, right? Like, is it, is signs enough, like, no trespassing, or anything like that?
You know, honestly, I, I'm not sure what that would be, we'd be glad to work with the Gullicksons on that, if, if there could be some reference to, to creating a, a boundary in the council's directions today. We have had very little time to, to kind of wrap our heads around where this is, and we haven't had a chance to speak to them, which, which we would have liked to. It was just kind of came up over the weekend and all happened very quickly, so...
It sounds like maybe you could work together to even allow people on there, if they were maybe respecting the property a bit better?
Potentially, we would need to, to institute some controls on that, just again, because of the, the use of the lands for Sylven purposes, there are often times where there are ceremony happening, and folks do have, you know, small snare lines and stuff set up for rabbits and whatnot, things of that nature.
All right, and lastly, do you, is that, do we know what that little, other little property subdivided is up in the corner there?
Are you speaking of the, the very top, right here?
Yeah, kind of up there.
That, that is actually a, a separate property, there's a small parcel there that's been hived off along the, the road, that I believe is privately held, it's not, not a Primco or Sylven land. Yeah, we do have more, more lands to the north as well, going up into the city's land, the city of Cold Lake's land, within their boundaries too.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Fedeav.
Mr. Warnke, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good. So, have you been in discussion with the city of Cold Lake about putting fencing on their end of the property line? Because I know there's a lot of access that is gained from the city of Cold Lake on to the lands.
There is, through the, through the African Trail Network, yeah. And actually, so, quite honestly, because a lot of the members, the, the lands are left much to their own devices, the members access them, but often don't know the difference between what Primco has instituted as far as trails and whatnot, and what has just kind of popped up. We were under the impression until we, administration on our end went out this weekend, that the trails from the African Lake sites kind of skirted the property, and they have, they have been expanded into the property. So, we will have to do something on our end, on, on that corner, to be able to help maintain, and particularly like the, you know, people who are accessing it, we want to make sure that they're safe. The property directly to the, I may be misspeaking here, but I'm fair, I'm fairly certain, the property directly to the west of the Primco lands actually is privately held as well, I don't believe it's municipal land. The area to the north, towards the northern of, the quarter section north of this site is adjacent to the, the hockey arena. And, and the city developments, so it's, again, it's private property, however, it's, it's, it's subdivided, right? So it's not a large space, yeah.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Okay, well, thank you for your...
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have Mr. Paul Gullickson. Sorry, we need a motion? Sorry, Paul, you got to sit down again. I'm, I'm, that's like three errors I'm going to strike out here right away. Okay. Thank you, Councilor Cravieak, for making a motion to allow Mr. Gullickson to speak. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's three strikes, I'm out. That's carried, thank you. Okay, Mr. Gullickson, come on up.
So, I, I don't know where to start. This is new, I just, Christie put it in my hands about 10 minutes ago, and I, I perused it, I guess you could say, and I, I think I, after listening to the lady speak, have a bit of an idea of what the concerns are. We have run the camp for 11 years, and so we're pretty familiar with how camps run, and, you know, I did my homework on it, talked to Fred Bamber, actually had a meeting with Minister of Tourism at the time, got input for her. Sewer is a big issue. As some of you know, I hold a license in the province of Alberta to design and install private sewage systems, and I've worked with the inspector, the MD has employed to make sure I comply in every respect. In the 11 years that we have operated, I have never had a client dump sewer in the bush or off property in the ditch in any way. We have, of the 64 sites that we now have, there are 20... there are twenty-one that we put in with sewage and a field to accommodate camping for the winter. Nobody else does, so we thought that might be a good thing to do, and it turned out it is. We designed, or I designed the system to be six times larger than necessary to accommodate twenty-one sites. There's twenty-one sites that have full service. And in that eleven years, that whole system has worked very good. It's a field system and it's in the middle of the compound. We do have a dump station also. We encourage campers in our, when they register, if they're staying just for a weekend, to use the town dump site. It's much, it's convenient, right by the tourist information center. It has water, everything you need to clean. And most of them do use it. We have the odd time that, we have a dump station and we have the odd time that a client will dump, but not very often. We rent, one of the things we can do that I know you guys don't do is we have a monthly system and we have a yearly system where you can come and buy a site for a year and come on a weekend, one or two weekends a year, a month. And that is a little different from what's normal, but it allows people coming from Calgary Left Bridge, Red Deer, to not have to, to not have to drag their trailer all the way every time they come. So we do that. And those people will use a little dump wagon and go to the dumpster and they'll pull it behind their truck or their quad and they'll make the dump. So I am very, very, very much aware of environmental rules and regulations when it comes to private sewage systems. I've been an inspector, as you guys know, in the industry for fifteen years and inspected 5,200 homes in that twelve years I was a home inspector. And I did your sixteen, your sixteen...
Campsites.
Campsites, yeah, for you guys. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is I know what I'm doing when I design and put in the system. The new sites that I've applied for are, I have no intention of putting sewer in there. Sewer is, you know, to jump through all the hoops to comply is just not worth it. You know, the money that you put into it and you get out doesn't justify it. So I, all I would like to apply for, and I made it clear in my application, is to have electrical and water. Because your campers are usually weekenders. They come, they go, they can dump in town. So I made that clear to Christie when I put in my application that I will not be applying for any more than the twenty-one sites that I do have. They're in, they've been working great for eleven years. I think that covers the sewer response. The property lines that border Cold Lake First Nations, I would say sixty-five percent of that border is across marshland, okay? And about forty percent goes up a very steep hill and it's undevelopable. You know, there's nothing you can do with it. It would be very expensive to try and even begin to try and develop it. My new campsites that I've asked for are all at the other end of our property. They're not even close to Cold Lake First Nations. Bruce Drake, Surveyor Drake surveyed that when I started and we did a cut line. So he could verify our property lines. And that cut line is visible, I think, on an aerial map. It's quite clear. And the cut line is on my property, like it's not on Cold Lake First Nations. The boardwalk that was mentioned that goes across the marsh starts, if you follow the property line, you'll see that the boardwalk starts about two hundred feet in on my, on solid land. And it joins, where it joins the property line is where it ends. It actually ends before, right at the property line where the property line comes in at an angle. So there's no, there's no boardwalk on Cold Lake First Nations property. Regardless of what it might show, that's a fact. You guys can all come and look. We have one on the site facing Louis Hebert is my neighbor to the west. And on his site, I have an agreement, I talked to Louis, he's actually given me a verbal to look after his property. And we have a problem with intruders coming in from the town of Cold Lake across, behind the mall there. It's only about a mile as a crow flies and people come in. We were hit twenty-two times last year. And all twenty-two intrusions into our property are recorded by the RCMP. They come in, they kick a door in, we have cabins there and that kind of thing. So I have twenty-four seven surveillance. I mean, we just have to do that. There is one little watershed that is close to the property line. The old barbed wire fence goes right behind it. So I built right there because of convenience sake. And Louis Hebert knows that I'm right on his property line. It's a, all it is is a watershed to fill my water tanks up for my trailers up there. What else was there? Yeah, I, there's something else that the lady touched on, Kim touched on that I can't...
We got a question here, Paul.
Yeah, but if you have a question, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm just, so I'm just wanna get some clarity here on, on your application it says no septic dumping provided. So you're talking about the new sites, you don't, so you said you have twenty-one sites that are hooked into a field system? And then you have another sandy dump somewhere?
What I meant is I'm not putting in a dump station in the new application. I do have one in the old one, the one to twenty-one, okay? And you can dump there, but again, we use it very little.
So if I'm looking, where the little cluster is there, that's the original campsite? Like kind of right by the curve of the road there?
Where there's a dot?
Yeah, where that orange dot is? Or is it up on the north end? Yeah, right there, is that?
Yeah, that's the one to twenty-one. And the field system is inside the trailers, okay? It's not on the outside. And I do have a dump station that is right there.
Is that kind of where your main access is into the lots as well? Like where do you come into your campsite, off the road?
No, I don't have, what do you mean? I don't understand your question.
So if I come to your campsite and I'm on the highway or on the road, where do I turn in to get into your place?
There's two places. One there, you can see right there, and then one right across the road from my entrance into my residence, yeah, yeah, right there.
So there's, so what is that up north there, kind of in that cluster of trees right there?
That's another camp.
That, yeah, that on the north is eleven sites in the north, yeah.
So I guess what I'm asking is, if I am camped at one of your new sites, do I have to go through lots, twenty-one lots to get out?
No, there's a road that follows the main highway, four fifteen A. There's a road on my property that gives you access to that site.
So if I was camping in a new area, I could go to your old area and dump my sewer if I wanted to? So you do have a facility to dump it?
We don't encourage it, my, on my, when I am asked, you know, where can I dump my sewage? I always recommend going to the town on people who are coming for a weekend.
To the city.
Yeah, to the city, yeah. And I've talked to the city and they have no problem with that. I even talked to the people, the provincial people down the road from me at the provincial park and they said, no problem, you can dump there too. So we have two, three dump stations for dumping sewer.
Not very far away, okay?
They're, yeah, two miles.
Yeah, yeah, Councilor Swigert.
Yeah, one of the concerns was work camp and I'd be concerned too. And so I don't think you talked about that, but you, I mean, you can't have a work camp without making an application for it, so hope that's not your intention.
Yeah, no, they're all designed for, if you look in the north, up on the south end, I mean, we're, we are, some, most of the sites have an acre, almost an acre. The only one that we did with the one to twenty-one, you see the trailers are quite close, or was for sewage compatibility. You know, to put in a sewage site for each of your sites would be cost, it wouldn't be worth it to do it. It's way too expensive, yeah.
So, did you understand my question about work camps?
Yeah.
Yeah, so why, I'm not sure why you talk about sewer, but I'm just curious about work camps.
There are some people that do like to come for a month. And so we do have the sewer, so you don't have to unhook and leave. But my camp is designed for a family camp, it's not designed for a work camp, no.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You mentioned, sorry, you mentioned a little trailer that, for dumping sewer. You said you have some type of little trailer that people could use or something?
Yeah, it's a little mini, you can buy them at an RV store. And it basically, it's not very big, it's probably twenty gallons or something like that. And you can use it to transport your sewer from one site to another. Quite often campers do carry them with them.
Okay, so it's not, it wasn't like a little honey wagon that you provide? It's, if people have that, they bring it?
No, it's their own private, I don't transport it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Skarsen?
So I don't know, I don't quite know the layout of this yet, but it sounds like maybe there is some trails that come from your campsite to the north?
Yeah.
So then, I don't, so I guess a couple of questions. First one, do you currently have anything that suggests that this is not your property that they're going on to? Or two, are you willing to work with the Cold Lake First Nations as to put up signs or something like that effect to say, listen, respect the property here or whatever, right?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. That was the other thing that was running around the back of my head, I couldn't bring up. But we have one, two, three trails that come in, one from Louis Hebert's and two from Cold Lake First Nations that tie into their, that tie into their property. They're old trails that have been there for, since I was a kid. We, you know, we rode horseback in and out of those trails and into Sandy Lake or African Lake, I guess they call it now. So they have a history. They're not new trails. But it invites people to come into the camp. If you're on the trail and you're quadding, you can hear the quads coming. And we have traditionally left them open as a convenience. I, you know, I've had First Nations people on quads come in on my property just as we've, they've probably had people going in on their property off ours. Last year was a very unique and different year. Like I said, we had twenty-two hits on our property and they came in on the trails. So I took my Bobcat and I blocked them off. I had a pile of stumps and trees there and I pushed them up to the property line, going into Cold Lake First Nations and into Louis Hebert's also. That won't stop the bad guys, but it'll stop the quads. And I do have signs up, you're trespassing. And after that, you know, I've talked to the RCMP, what else can you do, you know?
Any other questions? Yeah, I think First Nations is willing to work with you as well.
Yeah, if they wanna meet with me and discuss their issues, you know, and we, I have a very good working relationship with First Nations and I know most of the councilors and a lot of the people on staff there. And I'm sure there's no issues that can't be resolved between them and us by sitting down and having a talk.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. Or you're done. It's my turn. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I now have a couple of questions for you as well. So when I look at their, the Baywood Park safety policy, so is that, like, do we review that and approve that? Or is that, they just need to provide and say, yes, that's all we need to see? Or how does that process work? Is there requirements that are, you know, included in it?
Through the review to all of council, they are regulated to, or requested to provide this to us. We don't make sure that the I's are crossed and the T's are dotted. We just make sure that they do have something to provide to their renters that say, hey, you know, in a case of emergency, what are you going to do? We don't have a standard that they have to meet that says you have to tell them...
Does somebody have a standard? Like where would they, where would they get a standard from, let's say? Like someone must regulate it at some point.
Maybe the province has some information. We can definitely look at getting a more stringent regulation policy created for campgrounds. But as it is right now, it is just requested that they provide us something that says how you're gonna deal with emergencies.
They could provide just about anything and it would be fine by the MD, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And then secondly, so the appendix C, is that just, that's pulled out of one of our policies, is that right? Or section thirty-five campgrounds?
Yes, that is the current section thirty-five from the land use by law.
So then, you know, thirty-five point six, it talks about scope of project and it talks about water sewage services. So just, I guess, the information that there is none provided for these new sites is all you needed to see in the scope of project, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Yes, go ahead, Councilor Swigert.
Yeah, I guess another question would be, I'm not sure if it's for you or for Paul, but the new sites, are they day use only or are they full-time? Or what was the application? Or do we even, we don't even know, or we don't need to know, I suppose, do we?
Yes, unfortunately, that timeframe was not captured on this, that if you did want it for six months or for a year round.
And I'm not sure if we need to know that. I'm just curious if, maybe Paul wants to talk about that, how...
We, the one to twenty-one with the water sewer and electrical are year-round. We advertise them as year-round. And there are people that, you know, quite frankly, have nowhere to go in this day and age and they can't afford a house. They have a trailer. They can't afford a house or an apartment. And, you know, they come and I give them a good deal. The other ones, all the other ones like have just electrical and water. Those are the two essentials for, that your camper wants is electrical and water. They can come for a month, they can come for a week, or they can do a seasonal. And by seasonal, I mean, they live somewhere else, but they don't wanna drag their trailer all the way to Cold Lake every time they come camping. So they, we work out a deal, I have a price rate where they pay, you know, a very reasonable price. And they'll be there maybe two weekends a month. And so you don't know how long they're gonna be there. But there's certainly, and that includes a five-month period, May, June, July, August, and September. We don't open up till May first and we shut down September thirtieth, like your parks do. And I don't wanna be bothered, you know, with those guys after and before that, those dates.
Okay, so what you said is the new... Okay, so what you said is the new, the new sites won't be year-round then, probably?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, thanks.
They'll be just seasonal, five months, okay?
Okay, any other questions, or someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, motion number one, we go with staff recommendation here.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick for making a motion. The council approves development permit number two zero two four D one zero five for a fifty-site campground expansion within northwest seven sixty-three, one west of the fourth marina as discretionary use pursuant to part six, section thirty-five, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two of the land use bylaw for Paul and Lynn Gullickson with the following conditions, one through six. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Carson?
Well, I just wanted to say that it sounds like, you know, both parties that have an interest here are interested in working together to make this campground a success, and I hope that they do. You know, at the end of the day, we don't want to see, you know, the land go to waste there, right? With the up to the north and stuff, and respect the land, I think that's important for sure. And to me, I think we've kind of addressed these concerns, I know we have, but like I said, I really hope that the two parties can work together and make it a success, so.
Yes, Counselor Fideev.
Yeah, I kind of want to echo Counselor Carson's comments on that. You know, there's got to be some, some, some clear disclaimers that the land north is, is, is private, and it's not, you know, a trail for anybody to use, it's not a crown land, and I think that's important for us to, to realize. And I think that's kind of captured, as long as the parties can get together. Because I mean, if I was a landowner, I wouldn't want anybody trespassing on my land, so it's a very valid point, so thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Here, everyone else voted, okay, that's carried, thank you. All right, we'll take a five-minute recess. All right, welcome back. We're on to development application seven point three.
This is development permit two thousand twenty-four dash D dash one one zero for Nathan and Alana Gamash. The applicant is applying for a major home business use to operate a heavy equipment technician shop. The property is located half a mile east of Highway eight ninety-two and Township Road six twenty intersection, southeast of the hamlet of Ardmore. Adjacent properties are quarter sections and remnants. The applicant is applying to operate a heavy equipment technician shop in an existing shop. Nathan will be the only employee operating Monday to Friday, seven AM to five PM on tractor units and empty trailers. He will use a third-party safety disposal for used oil. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May seventh, and we received no concerns. A referral was sent to the MD Infrastructure Services Department with no concerns regarding this development. Recommendation for development application two thousand twenty-four dash D dash one one zero is approve the request for a home business for a heavy equipment technician shop as a discretionary use as per part six, section forty-nine, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two of the land use bylaw with the following conditions, as per section forty-seven point three, major home business. A major home business may utilize accessory buildings while still maintaining the residential use as the primary use on-site. The home business may employ up to three persons who do not live on the site or within the primary residence. A home business may not generate traffic uncharacteristic to the area. All required parking must be on-site. Outdoor storage of materials, goods, or equipment on the site shall be directly related to the home business, and at the discretion of the development authority may require screening or fencing. The display or placement of signs on the premises of a home business shall be restricted to one identification sign no larger than one square meters in area and may be indirectly illuminated. Any questions?
Yes, Counselor Sawyer.
Just, Reeve, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Sawyer, for making this motion. The council approves development permanent application number two zero two four D one one zero for a major home business for a heavy equipment technician shop on plan one three two zero nine nine two, block one, lot one, within southeast one sixty-two, four west of the fourth marina as discretionary use pursuant to part six, section forty-seven, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two of the land use bylaw for Nathan and Elena Gamash with the following conditions, one through two. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Fideev?
Uh, just had a quick question in regards to the maps, so under appendix B. I was just trying to, like, understand it last night. Is that, is that a dead-end road going, uh, going?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's no neighbors to the east, no, to the west? Or just goes straight to the road?
Through the reef to Counselor Fideev, there is one neighbor to the east, as shown on the aerial there.
And that is a gravel, that's gravel road, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seen and I'll call for the vote. All right, all those in favor? Or didn't come up, all those in favor?
Yeah, mine came up, actually.
Mike, are you in favor?
Yeah.
Nurse? Okay, that's carried seven. We're just having a little bit of problems this morning. Okay, on to seven point four.
This is development permit application two thousand twenty-four dash D dash one one five. The applicant is CNRL. The applicant is applying to recommission a provincially approved work camp. The property is located near CNRL Primrose South Plant in the former ID three forty-nines, Ward six north. Adjacent properties are crown land. The applicant would like to recommission a previously established work camp and replace three sleeper units. Water and sewer is on-site, and CNRL is accredited in building, gas, electrical, fire, and, uh, oh, sorry. Building, gas, plumbing, fire, and electrical safety codes, and will not require these permits from the MD. The work camp has been unoccupied since two thousand nineteen, but is approved by the province until two thousand twenty-nine as per DML zero two zero one nine nine. They are requesting the work camp be approved for three years. Adjacent landowner letters were not sent out, as there are no adjacent landowners. Our recommendation for development application two thousand twenty-four dash D dash one one five is approve the request for a work camp as a discretionary use as per part six, section sixty-six, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two of the land use bylaw with the following conditions, shall be operated as per the provincial approvals. The camp is approved until July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, at which time a new permit is required or reclamation shall be undertaken.
Thank you, yes, Counselor Fideev?
I'll make the motion to approve this permit.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Counselor Fideev, for making the motion. The council approves development permit application number two zero two four D one one five for a work camp within northwest four sixty-seven, four west, west of the fourth marina as discretionary use pursuant to part six, section forty-seven, and part seven, section sixty-nine point two of the land use bylaw for Canadian CNRL Limited with the following conditions, one through two. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? If I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You, too.
On to nine point two, point one.
Morning, council.
Morning.
So this morning I have, administration is presenting council with Environmental Protective Services Department quarterly report for the months January, February, March, two thousand twenty-four. Today we have the two departments, and then Waste Services will be giving their annual report after for two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, council.
Good morning.
I will start with an update with our pest control programs. The weather has significantly reduced the beaver problems in recent years. We received twenty-one beavers in the first quarter compared to fifty-two during the same time last year. With regards to the rat rabies program, we have completed four hundred and seventy-five of the five hundred and eighty-five required inspections as per our annual grant agreement. To date, no rats have been identified. We've noticed an increase in predation among our livestock owners. This year, eight hundred and sixty-four coyotes and thirty-two wolves were brought in. The sounder trapping provided by Alberta Ag and Irrigation concluded on March thirty-first of this year. However, we will continue to investigate any potential sightings within the MD to ensure that no wild boar will be at large. With the deregulation of strychnine, we can assist with, with, we can assist landowners with two control options made available. This will include zinc phosphate and rosal. We, we also offer Richardson ground squirrel traps that are available to rent at our facility. Our agricultural service board members attended the annual conference in Lethbridge this year. At the conference, our ADM, John Canrad, discussed a three-year plan for water management due to the drought conditions over the past couple of years. Alberta Ag and Irrigation is undertaking a review of our Alberta Weed Control Act. ASBs were asked for the input and discussion on, on the weeds that they are currently on the noxious and prohibited noxious weeds list. The ASB members also attended the Crossroads Cross Conference in Calgary in January. Our quarter one VSI report showed twelve hundred and twenty-three claims that had been submitted for a total of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. It's pretty much in par for twenty twenty-three, to match twenty twenty-three. Our Shelter Belt Tree Program went on sale on March twelfth this year. We had really good uptake by our local residents. The trees will be available for pickup this Thursday and Friday. The Bodywell Seed Cleaning Plant held its annual AGM on February twenty-second. Two board member terms had ended, and two new people came in, Curtis Blaine and Marcy McCackren, were elected as the new board members. This concludes my report, my first quarterly report, are there any questions?
Yes, Counselor Carson?
I have a couple, so, one, have we had any wild boar sightings in MD or not yet?
Through the reef to, to Darcy, yes, we have had some wild boar sightings, but when we investigated them, they were domestic black pigs.
Oh, so do we have a, do we have like a policy in place as to what we will do if we do have sightings? Is it like up to the MD to get rid of them, or how does that work?
Through the reef, we have in draft a wild boar policy, we haven't brought it forward so far.
Okay, and then, secondly, do we do anything with cougars at all? Like, as far as, if they're in, like, residential areas and things like that, or how does that work?
No, that would go through Fish and Wildlife.
Okay.
Counselor Fideev?
Good morning, so in regards to your coyote and wolf production program, so that, yeah, the increase in coyotes and wolves is pretty drastic. Is there a certain area of the MD that, that's kind of been, I guess, contributed to?
Through the reef, yes, there is, there's been two major areas. One is, it would be northwest of, of the MD. We've had a lot of cattle attacks out there by wolves. I believe Fish and Wildlife brought in a team to try to handle some of those wolves coming down. And then Beaver Dam area has always been another area that's a lot of wolves.
So then, the Wolf Lake area?
Wolf Lake, yes.
Go bigger. All right, okay, thank you very much.
What's the chances of strychnine coming back anytime soon?
To the reef, absolutely zero.
So they're never going to bring that program back?
Never.
And what's, what's these other things that you guys are providing, like, how, are they, do they do anything, or are they just?
There's two options that, that we're recommending, and the zinc phosphate is a single, a single dose to do it. It's the timing of it that's, that's quite crucial. Rosal is a multiple feeding bait, and most people don't like to go out and do it more than once. So we still recommend shooting, shooting them and getting them early.
Okay, right, right in the spring.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you, madam, have a great day.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Reeve, Reeve and councilors.
Good morning.
I'm going to present the Department of Public Safety's quarterly report. I'll start with the MD infrastructure patrols. Many of our patrols focus on the protection of MD properties and infrastructure. We try to hit bin sites, greater shops, and our fire halls, and anywhere that in between. We also do our community halls, and as we're trolling through a lot of areas, it's part of just hitting them as we go by. Our focus on industry, we partner with CNRL, Baytex, Novus, and Imperial Oil. We deliver patrol services on the well sites and service roads. In the first quarter of two thousand twenty-four, we delivered two hundred and ninety-two hours of patrol service to our industry partners on a fee-for-service basis. With our commercial vehicles, many of our peace officers are trained to inspect commercial vehicles for safety violations. During, during our stops and stuff, we also train each other, so some of us are a little bit more trained, so we learn from each other as well. So during this quarter of two thousand twenty-four, MD peace officers conducted twenty commercial vehicle inspections resulting in two vehicles out of service. Overweight vehicles damaging MD roads are priority for public safety. This quarter, two violators were given five warnings and one ticket. Ticket counts by year for the first quarter. As you could see, we still carry our tickets a little bit through the year. For bylaw, we've had a major increase in dog fines. We don't usually do a whole lot of other stuff, but we are seeing an increase in, in aggressive dogs. Warnings, we delivered four in two thousand twenty-one, as you see, it carries through, we are coming down in our warning numbers. But we also usually do tickets and warnings together. Provincial tickets, we are up to three fifty, so our total for the first quarter was five forty-one for two thousand twenty-four. There was a total of seventy-three thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars in tickets written for January first and March thirty-first. As you could see by our ward hours of community visits, as you could see, Ward one is always up. That's because our office is in that area, so a lot of times you get the conglomerate of extra hours through the Ward one. We do get a fair amount of complaints from Fort Kent, but unfortunately, it's not really that many. We do visit a lot of areas in the MD, as you can tell, that the MD is very sparse and we drive all over. If you could see for our files, we have a total number of a hundred and twenty-four files for the first quarter of two thousand twenty-four. Again, dogs, spring, dogs are up a lot, and you could see we had some sidewalk complaints this year as well, so that we went out to address different things where people were not shuffling. We did come up with a new program where we put a notice on people's doors, give them twenty-four hours to clean, and then if they don't, then we'll go out and start. As it's a new program, we've been doing very well, and people have been calling in and asking for more questions and how things are going about. So with January, February, March, through the traffic safety calendar, it was intersection safety, distracted driving, and seat belts. Some of our highlights is we assisted our CMP with fifteen files, we attended four motor vehicle collisions within the MD. There are two incidents of failed to stop for peace officer. We issued four tickets for drive while unauthorized, four tickets for driving without a license, and issued four tickets for drive without insurance. Lots of violators on the road are not having insurance, not having registration, lots of issues with heavy speeding. If you looked at our first page, we had a one forty-three in an eighty zone, so, so, a lot of people aren't paying attention. So some, a lot of people aren't paying attention to speed out there. We're getting a lot of speeding on our roads, which is very dangerous. You have any questions?
Yeah, Counselor Fidav and Counselor Slipchak. Beat your eyes, I can.
Quick to draw. Just one comment and one question. So your hours in Cherry Grove are still quite low and same with the the visits in Ward 6. So my question regards to that is, so for industry roads, has industry asked us at all to patrol a little bit more things, you know, since things are getting busier or just kind of everything's just been status quo?
Through the reef to Counselor Fidav. Basically, industry hours are industry hours. We have a stat contract for yearly and we do so many hours per month. Those don't change. A lot of times when we're heading to Cherry Grove, it's for complaints. Sometimes with the shortage of officers, we don't always get there. But we do head out there and we do as much as we can. We do try to patrol through the area and a lot of times our patrols, when you look at Cherry Grove and you look at Ward 6, those hours are separate, but Cherry Grove as the hamlet itself is the 30, or sorry, is the nine hours. And then you look at Ward 6, it's 60, so that's all of Ward 6. So we haven't been getting a lot of complaints in that area. It's, we do get a lot of speeding complaints on touch of Road 630, going to the ski hill and things like that. And we have had some problems with the Baywood Road where the S curve is, just coming off there, heading into town. We have been doing a little bit more based on the speeds and things and trying to figure out what we're going to do with that one file.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll get an update from from Waste Management regards to, you know, seeing a lot more like illegal dumping going on, so it's kind of just one of those concerns. But we're so close to the Saskatchewan border, right? That it it's a well-traveled place. Kay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to ask on your five counts for snow debris on sidewalk or roadways, can you identify what issues they were specifically?
So the five, sorry, through the reef to Counselor Slipchak. For the five, we had some complaints in the hamlets. One of those files, one of my staff, my previous staff had made it all into one. So we had eight properties actually in that hamlet or in Ardmore and Fort Kent where we were having a lot of issues with people not shoveling. So we did go out, we did door knocks, we did leave business cards, people have called back. And then we went out and revisited, made sure things were shoveled. A few properties, there was one that was basically left to, the person had passed away, so we had to deal with whoever was in charge of the property, so it took a little bit longer. But once we got there and explained that it needed to be taken care of, they took care of it pretty quickly for us.
So all these were issues on snow removal?
On the snow, yeah.
Counselor Craig, yeah?
Yeah, thank you. Registration is always an issue because the government doesn't give notices when it expires, unless you have AMA, like I have AMA, so they send my registration in the mail, which is good. So thank you.
I'm going to go and check my truck right now.
November.
You can get an app where they will send you a warning, notice that your insurance is or registration is.
Sorry?
I do it too. I go without and I was like, I think I should check that. And I had the app, but they don't send notices anymore as far as I know.
No.
No, that might have actually been done. They've only done that, I think, for the first two years. I could check on that and let you guys know.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, okay, thank you. Great job.
So administration's recommendation action is that council accepts the Environmental Protective Services 2024 first quarter report as information.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Slipchak, for making this motion. The council accepts the Environmental and Protective Services 2024 first quarterly report as information. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Matt. 922, here he is. Good morning.
Good morning, counsel. I'm here to present the 2023 Waste and Recycling Reports for the Waste Services Department. We'll start with the waste report first. So we have 167 six-yard waste bins placed around the MD for residential waste drop-off at community bin sites and for use at MD campgrounds, shops and office buildings. In 2023, the MD of Bonneville disposed of 3,426.33 tons of Class II household waste for a total cost of $358,629.96. Of that, $205,530.14 was for tipping fees through the Beaver River Regional Waste Management Commission, where we are charged $41.35 per ton for tipping at the Thorhail landfill and $13.15 per ton for commission fees, which primarily go toward funding equipment repair and replacement. Our hauling rate was five, sorry, $50.49 per ton from January through June and went up to $52 per ton for July through December. This brought our total hauling fees to $153,099.82 for the year of 2023. 96.3% of our waste collected by our MD frontload garbage trucks was hauled to the transfer bins at our landfills called trans stores, and these are located at five of our landfill sites, while the remaining 3.7% was hauled to the transfer stations at the Bonneville and Cold Lake landfills during haul contractor downtime and for our campground waste that is collected during camping season. Over the course of the previous haul contract and this current one, it is most economical for us to use the trans store bins at our landfills for transferring our waste. Under our current contract with the increased hauling rate, it is costing us $106.50 per ton, whereas if we were hauling to the town of Bonneville or city of Cold Lake transfer stations, we would be charged $130 and $150 per ton respectively. Using the trans stores at the MD landfills equates to a minimum of $72,000 per year of savings. Our 30-yard hauling costs have been steadily decreasing the past four years as we've prioritized better sorting at our sites and in 2023, we were down roughly 64% from our peak in 2019, a decrease in costs of over $18,000. We have 30-yard bins for Class III bulky waste and clean wood at the MD shopyard and Muriel Lake landfill has 30-yard bins for Class III bulky waste as well as metal for recycling. Fort Kent landfill had bins for Class III bulky waste up until October of 2023, when this was transitioned to a bin site. All of these bins were hauled to the LaCory landfill for disposal. Landfill visits remained fairly consistent at most sites, but but did see a significant decrease at Fort Kent as it was open for only nine months of 2023. And Muriel Lake saw a decrease as the bin site located adjacent to the landfill is now open 24/7 since the closure of the Muriel Lake West bin site in the fall of 2022. Moving on to the 2023 annual recycling report. So we have 158 six-yard bins for recyclables placed around the MD for cardboard, plastic, paper, tin cans, compost and glass. In 2023, we recycled 153.2 tons of cardboard, 16.7 tons of plastic, 23.4 tons of paper and 5.3 tons of tin cans. All of these materials are hauled to the city of Cold Lake Recycling Center, where we are charged $25 per ton for these materials. Prior to 2020, we were hauling these materials as well as twine to a commercial entity in Cold Lake. Glass and compost are collected and handled internally, with glass going to a bunker at the LaCory landfill to be crushed with concrete. Compost is hauled by our trucks to the Ardmore landfill, where it is passively composted for future landfill reclamation projects. Metal is collected from all landfill sites and has generated us some revenue over the past three years, in large part thanks to the increased prices in the metal markets. Used oil and used oil products continue to be collected from Ardmore, LaCory, Thirion and Goodridge landfills, as well as from the public workshop. Electronics, paint and household hazardous waste were collected at all seven landfills, sorted and hauled back to the yard to keep our landfills neat and tidy. Electronics are hauled to Techno Trash and Tabor, while paint and HHW are hauled to DBS Environmental in Lethbridge. Tires are collected at each of the landfill sites and collected on an as-needed basis by Liberty Tire. There are no costs or rebates involved in the tire program, although we have received five grants over the past 11 years to construct tire marshalling areas at different landfills. Propane tanks are accepted at no charge at all MD landfills, but yet we end up finding dozens left for us at bin sites. Tank traders collect our propane tanks on an as-needed basis. In 2023, we rolled 47 bales of grain bags and now we have rolled over 58,000 kilograms of grain bags for 312 bales in the six years since we started the grain bag recycling program. Prior to the Ag Plastics Recycling Pilot Program beginning in the fall of 2019, we shipped Baylor twine to a commercial recycler in Cold Lake along with our household recyclables. This came with extra hauling and tipping fees during those years. Since the pilot program began, Baylor twine usage has decreased significantly in the area and as such, we have stockpiled roughly only 80 bags of clean twine over the past three years. This material was collected prior to the end of 2020, 2023 and generated a small rebate. The mattress recycling programs remain strong during the six and a half years of the program. The cost of the program in the present still remains significantly less expensive than the long-term implications of landfilling these nearly 6,700 mattresses. The economic benefit to this program is when using conservative numbers by industry standards, we have saved approximately $535,000 in landfill space over these six and a half years. The net benefit is each mattress that is landfill takes up roughly $80 of landfill space, while we are shipping them to be recycled for less than $31 each. The environmental benefit to this program is that we are doing our part to stimulate a circular economy because on average, 90% of every mattress recycled is turned into new products. The net cost of recycling in 2023 totaled $25,149.56. This amount reflects the cost of all the recycling and shipping done by third parties and does not reflect the management and internal cost of operating these programs. As of April 1st, 2025, the Extended Producer Responsibility Program for Household Recyclable Products will come into effect in Alberta and we will begin to see some revenue generated to offset much of these operating costs. And that concludes the 2023 annual waste and recycling reports. Any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, Counselor Slipchak?
You mentioned propane tanks, again, lots of them dumped at the bin sites?
Through the reef to Counselor Slipchak, yeah, there's a lot of propane tanks that are dumped off. They're just left beside the dumpsters. For the most part, thankfully, they're not thrown into the dumpsters for disposal because obviously there's safety concerns with that. But yeah, we do see a significant amount of usually 20-pound propane tanks dropped off.
I thought with all this recycled, the way it's recycled, I thought you wouldn't see as much of that. But maybe we could do a drive like we do with paints once a year, send it out and pay return, send in your old propane tanks and like we do, you know how we do with the paint thing, we do once a year?
Through the reef, Counselor Slipchak, so we we actually started taking all these materials year-round. So that toxic roundup program was a one, once-per-year program, but the costs and the administrative time associated with with running that program, you know, was a lot of money compared to just taking the materials year-round at the landfills. People were dropping them off anyways at bin sites or other locations, so it just made sense to offer that stuff year-round.
Yeah, Counselor Fidav.
Yeah, thanks for the report. It's awesome. So I know we we have experience in in campground waste, so I guess this is an ask for the CAO, Waste Services and Planning and Development about how we can work with coming up with some guidelines to these newer camp sites that we've just seen for an application. I didn't really feel very strong with what they're going to do with their waste with the new application coming through, but if we have some sort of recommendations from your department in regards to, say it is a 114 site, we have a few sites, you guys are seeing the amount of volume that's coming in and your, you know, your recommendation could be you need at least two bins per X amount of sites available. So just a, just an ask for more clarity for whoever's developing and planning later on.
Any other questions?
Is that a good recommendation, Mr. Hogan?
We certainly could put something together if council would like to make a resolution to direct administration to put together some campground guidelines in terms of waste, solid waste, wastewater, sewage. We could certainly put a formal document together, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to make that a resolution. It just, there's just a lot of like unclarity and there's, you know, like somebody that's applying for something like this, when they don't have clarity, just doesn't give them the direction. Like it'd just be nice for for me to know when I'm applying for something that I need to have, you know, X, Y and Z in my budget to see how I can, you know, become profitable. And I think it's a good, good things to have.
Through the reef, to Counselor Fidav, and actually to all the council, I would suggest then is a motion arising when the report is done to direct administration to create a campground standard. And I think that would, I think a very simple motion would give us some direction as to what we would come back with.
Okay, thank you.
Is our standard that poor right now?
I would have to check with parks, but I don't believe we have much of a standard right now. Campgrounds are private businesses. We don't regulate private businesses very much, if at all, and this would be, this would be beginning to regulate something that was happening in a private business. So we don't really, we don't really regulate that. We have our own internal standards at our own campgrounds, but that's, that policy doesn't exceed into into private, private property and private business.
Okay. Thank you for your report. Any other questions? No, thanks.
Okay, so the administration recommended action is to approve the 2023 Waste and Recycling Annual Reports.
All right, thank you. Deputy Reeve Crick for making this motion, that council accepts the Waste Services 2023 Annual Waste and Recycling Report as information. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'll call for the vote.
I guess before I put my motion of arising and through, just seeing if there's a, is there an appetite from council to maybe put something together for people that might be applying? Just kind of give them a rough standard because right now there isn't one.
Okay. Let council speak.
I do and I, because I know we don't really have, I don't think we have guidelines. I think of the country camping sign on Highway 55. You know, it it ended up being a work camp, but I don't think we had any, any requirements for them to do anything, so don't think it turned out that well. And I'm thinking it shouldn't even be a campground. It's pretty disappointing, but so I think we have some guidelines that would help.
Yeah. Through the reef, I missed, I was kind of looking at the report here and you asked your question to the CEO of the, I missed what you're, what you're really getting at, sorry.
Yeah, basically, when somebody's applying for something, there's no standards given and we've seen some of the challenges with the application that was there, right? So if if our, you know, our recommendations are based on X amount of stalls that you have, you know, and our recommendation, you need two bins, you need, you know, because we're, you know, we're, our guys are doing that right now, where we're going around camp sites and they know the volume of of waste and I guess disposals that are needed, you know, instead of that will maybe prohibit from illegal dumping or or anything like that, just something that the the private owner might kind of value, right? And it's just a recommendation on our part to standards.
Yes, Corey.
So you're asking for just a kind of a recommendation as to how much bin space a campground should have?
Absolutely, yeah.
Not a requirement?
Not a requirement. I mean, it's just, I mean, if somebody wants to, it's like, well, it is a private organization and if your campground is run, you know, far less superior than another, people were, they're just going to move, right? But I think it's just give them, you know, give them an idea of what it takes to to do that.
I don't, it seems like a very simple request. I don't think it's necessary, but.
What's a simple request?
Well, for you're asking our administration just to give private campgrounds in the MD a suggestion as to how much bin space they need to have on the grounds at any given time or what?
Correct.
Okay, whatever. It seems pointless to me myself.
Why is it pointless?
Well, private businesses have to figure out how to run their own business, don't they? I'm not going to come in here and ask how many garbage cans I should have in my house to contain my household waste so that before, or how often I should bring it to the to the landfill.
Yeah, but you're like your private house. Yeah, but you're, like, your private household is based on your private household. It doesn't have an impact on, on neighboring communities when you have one hundred and fourteen, uh, you know, sites that are, that are out there. It has a further impact. And is, and it is a business, so we should have some guidelines to a business. Like when I get a, uh, when I get a sign for my business and for anyone, like any one of us in a city or a town environment, we just can't put up a sign in front of our business. It has to be properly secured. It has to be properly visible. It can't impact anybody else. So there are standards out there for, for businesses that are, that are there, simple, basic standards.
Okay, I, I'm not arguing with you with the fact that people should put their garbage away or something like that. It's just telling a business, private business, how to run their business or asking like for the M D to get involved and making suggestions as to how people should run their businesses. Everybody knows we can't go dumping garbage random places, and we can't dump sewer random places. The, the sewer stuff, that's, that's totally a provincial requirement. It's all, that's all regulated provincially. But whatever, if you want to make a motion, go ahead and make a motion.
Mr. Polinski, thank you. I don't think we made any motion today. Why don't we bring this up for discussion, committee of the whole or something next month?
Sure.
Just a thought.
Yeah, no problem. Like I say, and that's kind of why I'm asking for, before I make the motion is to see if there's any appetite. I mean, I think, uh, direction is always needed. I mean, we can't, uh, you know, rely on people's own judgment. Uh, I mean, that's why we have R C and P out there to, uh, control speed limits and everything else. And, I mean, we just, there needs to be some guidance, and that's our, our job as, uh, as municipal leaders is to, to, to have those uh, guidelines in place for, you know, for people.
I don't disagree to anyone, but I think it's a good idea to bring it to the committee of the whole. Okay, that's what we'll do.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Um, just so that, um, all of councils are aware, our next committee of the whole meeting is not until September.
Okay. Quite a waste.
Yeah, I think it's one of those things where, you know, uh, there's no applications coming up from what I see. But I think it's, uh, not just for now, but it's for, for later on as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, did we ask, was it carried? Yeah, let me see. Yeah, we're good. Thank you. Go ahead. That's strike four already or five for me. Where are we at? We're at nine point two point three now? Is that correct?
Okay, so, uh, the M D Bonneville has received correspondence from the Beaver River Regional Waste Management Commission requesting thirty-five thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars as the M D's portion of the twenty twenty-four requisition being levied in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand to municipalities. The requisition is to pay for capital costs which will not be covered by the Beaver River Regional Waste Management Commission reserves. On April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the M D received correspondence from the Beaver River Regional Waste Management Commission advising that major capital repairs are required for the replacement of the cylinder in the compactor at the Cold Lake Transfer Station, which will cost more than the reserves that are held for maintenance costs. The commission has decided to levy a requisition of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to member municipalities according to population census for capital cost sharing. The allocation of the requisition levied to members is included in the correspondence attached. The M D will be required to pay thirty-five thousand dol, uh, four hundred and fifteen dollars based on the population contribution of twenty-three point six-one percent. Attached for council's review is Appendix A, the original notice from the Waste Commission for the intended twenty twenty-four requisition, and then Appendix B, which is the corrected notice from the Waste Commission for the twenty twenty-four requisition. The reference to strategic, strategic plan is goal number one, building a viable and diversified regional economy. The cost and source of funding is, uh, the cost is thirty-five thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. The source of funding would be an unbudgeted expenditure could come from the Waste Services budget from the transfers to other local government budget line, which covers our waste hauling and tipping fees for the year. The communication strategy is this report is posted on the M D Bonneville website under the council agenda for today. The administration recommended action is that council approves an unbudgeted expenditure for the Beaver River Regional Waste Management Commission requisition in the amount of thirty-five thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars to be funded from the transfers to other local government budget.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion? Yes?
Mr. Bell, make that motion.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Swiger for making a motion that council approves an unbudgeted expenditure for the Beaver River Regional Waste Management Commission requisition in the amount of thirty-five thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars to be funded from the transfer to other local government budgets. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Crick. Sorry, Deputy Reeve Crick.
So it's an unbudgeted request. I just wondered when, like that cylinder, when do we know that that was going to be, need to be repaired or replaced?
Uh, through the reef, that, that just came up, uh, through the Waste Commission, just in, in April there.
Any other discussions or comments? Questions? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Nine point two point four.
Okay, as required by the province of Alberta, council is required to approve the appointment of pest inspectors to enforce the Alberta control, the Alberta Pest Control Act within the Municipal District of Bonneville for the twenty twenty-four season. The pest inspectors for the twenty-four season are Sonia Smeltzison, Carson McDonald, Emma Richard, Sarah Crosher, Arianna Church, Mackenzie Romanovich, Courtney Lefave, Odette Gagnon, Wanda Makarok, and Tyler Pratch. Our communication strategy, all weed inspectors will be issued Alberta Pest Inspector Identification Cards, and we will collaborate with the Marketing Communications Department to have an article published in the Rural Review for Public Awareness. Um, our administrative, administrative recommended action would be that a council approves the appointment of the following pest inspectors for the twenty twenty-four season to enforce the Alberta Pest Control Act as required by the province of Alberta. Sonia Smeltzison, Carson McDonald, Emma Richard, Sarah Crosher, Arianna Church, Mackenzie Romanovich, Courtney Lefave, Odette Gagnon, Wanda Makarok, and Tyler Pratch.
Thank you. Mr. Cravie?
I hope we approve these people. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Cravie, for making this motion that council approves appointing of the following ten people. Pest inspectors for the two thousand twenty-four season to enforce the Animal Pest Control Act as required by the province of Alberta, and all ten are listed below. Any discussion?
Mr. Reeve, just a quick question about pest inspectors and how they get qualified to do that.
Our administration recommended action is that council approves appointment of the following weed inspectors for the twenty twenty-four season to enforce the Weed Control Act as required by the province of Alberta. Carson McDonald, Emma Richard, Sarah Crosher, Arianna Church, Mackenzie Romanovich, Courtney Lefave, Odette Gagnon, Wanda Makarok, and Tyler Pratch.
Thank you. Yes.
I'll make a motion to pass.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sutcher, for making the motion that council approves appointing of the following nine weed inspectors for the two thousand twenty-four season to enforce the Weed Control Act as required by the provincial, sorry, of the, by the province of Alberta, and the nine are listed below. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none. I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Onto nine point two point six.
As required by the province of Alberta, council is required to approve the appointment of an appeal panel generated through the Agricultural Service Board on an annual basis. The appeal panel shall hear and determine the appeal within five days of receipt of a notice of appeal. The appeal panel may confirm, rescind, or vary the notice. The Alberta Pest Control Appeal Panel, Alberta Weed Control Act Appeal Panel, and Alberta Soil Conservation Act Appeal Panel will have the following members serving on each panel. Guy Benau, Robert Shalou, Alf Heard, Alyssa Krochak, Forrest Persley, and Greg Smear. The administration recommended action would be that council approves the appointment of the following individuals to an, to an appeal panel as recommended by the Agricultural Service Board to act on behalf of the Alberta Pest Control Act, Alberta Weed Control Act, Alberta Soil Conservation Act, being Guy Benau, Robert Shalou, Alf Heard, Alyssa Krochak, Forrest Persley, and Greg Smear.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, uh. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making a motion that council approves appointing the following individuals, six individuals to the appeal panel as recommended by Agricultural Service Board to act on behalf of the Alberta Pest Control Act, Alberta Weed Control, and Alberta Soil Conservation Act. The six are below. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Fedev?
Yeah, I do have a concern with, uh, with one member of the things that are presented. Uh, I would just like to go in camera to, to, to discuss that, please.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I need a motion to go in camera.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Fedev, for making a motion to go in camera. All those, or I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Reeve, a quick question. How many, how many are required for the panel? Are they all required?
I believe five are.
Five, yeah, because it would make not, no sense to have everyone required because you wouldn't get them all probably, right?
I think as council, we'll just go to the back instead of making everybody else move, but we'll wait for the, you might as well head, I'm sure.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
So because we actually already have a motion on the floor, council would need to approve withdrawing that motion before the motion to go into closed session. Um, that one, that motion does not take precedence over the main motion.
Okay, can we, uh, Ms. Severn, can we discuss the, uh, my objection first before we?
I'm sure you could. I'd like to say, um, if all of council, if there's no objections, you could, all of council could certainly withdraw the current motion on the floor and, and then you could make your motion.
Okay, so we'll have the discussion first, and then we'll go from there.
I, I personally don't, I guess I do object. I don't think we need to go in camera. I think we can approve the list as is, so we can vote on the first motion.
No, I, I do have an objection with that, and, uh, I just wanted to be clear and just known, so I want to have that conversation.
Okay, um. Why don't we just take a five-minute break and go talk in the back without being in camera? That's all. Okay, um. Thank you. I made my sixth or seventh mistake today, so, uh, welcome back. Uh, go ahead, Counselor Fedev.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor, and we'll just keep it the same. Thank you.
Right on. Any other discussion with Deputy Reeve Crick's, uh, motion? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Onto nine point three. Thank you. Point one. This guy's eager to go. He's a pretty big guy, you know, just get out of his way. Thank you. Could you turn the mic on, please?
Good morning, Reeve and council.
Good morning, gentlemen.
We are here today to present Kinnis Ridge's first quarterly report for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four ski season. Um, next slide, please. As you can see, we had seventy-seven operational days throughout the winter. We were closed eight for weather. We had four schools canceled and the potential eighty-nine operational days through this winter, which is, and it ended up being the exact same as last year in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, as you can see on the next slide here, we're talking about our seasonal revenue and expenses. Uh, this year, we brought in one point three million, um, spent a million on wages, seven hundred on operational costs. At the end of the day, we still made a net loss of minus three hundred and eighty-nine-eight thousand dollars, um, which is a little bit of an increase from the last year. Uh, however, we are trending in the right direction. We saved over a hundred thousand dollars on wages. Uh, and this slide here takes into account everything except for season passes because in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three winter, we had deferred revenue, which kind of swayed it a little bit out of whack for the year, up behind and ahead, so we took that out for the two years highlighted. So without season pass sales, we had a net loss of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The next slide, please. Season pass sales were slightly down this year, um, due to, we believe it due to weather and due to snow conditions and due to the economy. Uh, having said that, the season passes were down with a no price increase. That's just something to think about. Same with our lift tickets. We would traditionally see our lift tickets go up if our season passes went down, and we didn't quite see that. We were down a little bit on our lift tickets as well. Um, wages by service area, as you can see, we just compared it standard from last year to this year. And this was adding about eight full-time permanent positions and replacing a few seasonals. Um, we saved over five thousand hours from December first to April first. And the only department that cost us a little bit more money to operate was the kitchen due to the fact that we had a lot of, um, full-time permanents brought on to staff. I'm going to hand it over to Ian now.
Thank you, Reeve and council. Um, as Dave was saying, um, just with regards, uh, to wages, we did have five F T Es that we did bring in, in twenty twenty-three. So when you think that our total wage bill went down and we brought five F T Es in, so, you know, it's very diligent management of the staff at the Hill. of the staff at the hill, ensuring that we're getting efficiencies as we go. And then, as you see, is the cost revenue for the first quarter with comparisons to 2023 and 24. As Dave said, the operational days stayed the same. There were some weather things. Eight percent overall hill revenue increase, four percent average daily revenue increase, and then a decrease in nine percent for kitchen revenue, as we've discussed before, just currently how the economy is going and that people are saving money where they can, and food services being one of them. As you go through, we just have our pie graph that just shows kind of where the breakdown of the monies come from. So with the lift tickets with nine thousand, almost 10,000 lift tickets, two park, 6,700, lessons, 526, school revenue with 7,877, and 3,554 day rentals. And then, next slide, please, thank you. The school visits, as you can see, with regards to lift tickets tubing and the lunch program. The lunch program has reduced quite a bit. Once again, families are looking at ways of saving monies. Sure, they can come out, do the event, go skiing, but maybe where they need to cut back is the food program. Also, another thing that we have heard from the schools, the teachers, and the kids is that the current food program needs to be revamped. We're looking at a different way of doing some of those items. As the kids are coming one day during the year for school, some of those kids, that'll be their only visit, and we know that what they want, and if we just go to the next slide, what they do want is the poutine. We sold $33,000 worth of poutine. We've sold over $11,000 of chicken figures, 10,000 burgers, another 11,000 of fries and churros, and then the other item on there is bottled pop. When they're coming, they're having a fun day out. They just want to have fun. They want their poutine. They want their burger. So we're going to have some packages that kind of mimic what we see sales are doing and throw a healthy snack in there, but, you know, as some of them are only coming out once a year, make it a memorable day for them. Next slide. I know we talked about record-breaking ice cream sales last year, so just to let you know, we were on track again with over $11,000 worth of ice cream sold this year. As you can see, we had a skiing Reeve on the right-hand side who was doing some pretty good moves on the mountain there near Christmas time, and then the slush cup, as you can see on the left-hand side. Winter cabs, 133. The two-party rentals, you see them there, four of them at the two-hour intervals, the revenue associated there, slush cup, the revenue associated wine pairing, snow fever, and the skiing with Santa event on the 16th. Once again, we do our map with all the guests, and if you actually hover over some of those main points, this is probably PDF, so it won't show, but in GABA, it will actually tell you where they are from. And then you look at that comparisons as we look at the intermunicipal agreement that we'll be looking at here in the future, just where those guests are coming from, so we can know what realistic asks to have there. Next slide, thank you. And then, as you can see from the marketing, you see the website, the Facebook, and then the Instagram, and just kind of where those are hitting. Highlights are the radio ads, newspaper billboard, the two major events, the snow fever, the slush cup promotional campaign, the posters, brochures, and then there were some slush cup t-shirts, merchandise that we did have around, and then just doing some updates to our website, and then, once again, top locations. With regards to capital projects, so we submitted this a couple of weeks ago, we have now gone through procurement and ordered the snow guns for next season. Backup generator, Dave, do you want to talk on any of these?
The backup generator is being installed in October, I believe. We don't get, accept delivery until September 24th, but AFCO have been out and we've moved our meter from inside the lodge to outside the lodge. The generator is just strictly for the lodge. It won't be for the shop, the snowmaking system, or any of our little buildings around the hill. Truck replacement, again, it's out for tender. The AC upgrade is something we're actively looking at now. We're just trying to get all the information from our GM and employees to see what the needs and requirements are. And then, as for the load decks, we're going to be working on Blue Chair this summer, and then I'm going to pass it back to Ian for the Phase One of Trails.
Yeah, with regards to the Phase One of the trail development, we are going to get McElhany in here either on the 11th or 25th of next month for a council meeting, just to talk with council and talk about where we're at, and then what direction we want to move forward. Obviously, with the legacy tourism study that was done, there were some pretty high-level ideas that didn't quite match up with what was currently happening within the hill area, so we just want to bring it back to council and then just get some more understanding of where, how we're going to move forward and what's going to be the priority. Thank you. Any questions?
Yep. Mr. Reeve?
You know, I've heard from, you know, people over the years about the hours or the days of operation at Kinesu, and just wonder what your thoughts are on, on the days of operation. I'm not even sure when it is, but they're not, it's not seven days a week, so it's, is it, is it three or four? You want to talk a little bit about that? Should, you know, is it worth, you know, people buy, buy family passes or whatever and, and they, they can't ski every day, and I'm not sure if that's something we'll ever get to, or, you know, you go to any other ski resort, they don't shut down, you know, through the week, but they've got more, more population. I don't know. Talk about it, though, if you don't mind.
Yeah, thank you, through to Councilor Swiger. Yeah, we, we've kept the days the same, so we do have two closure days during the week period. What we did this year, we did try to do the night skiing on a Friday, just to try to encourage a bit more atmosphere at the hill, also to help with promotions with the restaurant. We saw very low numbers in the evening ski, and what we know historically and was confirmed this year, the bread and butter are with the school groups coming in and just making sure they're having a great time, and then looking at where that evening ski fits best and knowing that a lot of local skiers are coming out on the weekend.
Any other, yes, Councilor Fedeau?
Good morning. So in regards to your reports, so guests from locations is what I'm looking at. Looks like the circle from Lloydminster is bigger than, than Bonneville or St. Paul, but your, your under municipal comparisons, you have not captured Lloydminster, just from my own, I guess, curiosity, what, what the numbers might be for that.
Why Lloydminster looks so big in comparison to the MD is because that takes into account school groups that we had coming in from Lloydminster. So it was like a day visit and 150 kids perhaps came in.
So it was more of a kids thing than, okay.
It wasn't a local visit, yeah. And, and through the chair to Council Swiger regarding season passes for families, we found this year through our numbers that average passholder came for five visits to the ski hill. So that tells it in itself that, on averagely, our guests aren't coming out 20, 30 times a year. So if we were open for seven days a week, our operational costs would go up, you know, 20%, and then we'd have to cover those costs as well.
And then, just one more question in regards to, back to that, was, was Lacklebish is such a small impact on, on the hill?
Yeah, again, through the, through the Reeve there to Councilor Fedeau, again, it was a scho, a school group. It was a school visit that came from Lacklebish.
Hmm. Okay.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. Just looking for, uh, nope.
No, we're done.
What?
Morning, council.
Morning.
My apologies for jumping the gun there. I'm just very excited to present our Q1 report. So I'm Lyndon Shea, presenting the Planning and Development 2024 First Quarter Progress Report on behalf of Lisa Foliate. A total of 55 development permits, 29 building permits, two subdivision applications, 36 Realtor reports, eight new housing starts, 114 safety codes permits, 311 inspection reports, and 50 address signs were issued in Q1 of 2024. Next slide, please. Of the 55 issue, of the 55 issued development permits for Q1, the average time to issue was one day for permitted uses and 24 days for discretionary uses. Of the 29 issued building permits, there was 20 residential building permits, seven industrial building permits, and two recreational building permits. The average time to issue for these permits was 16 days, and the building permits represent a total construction value of $7,679,693. Two new applications for subdivision were also received in Q1 with an average of 55 days to approval. Next slide, please. Of the 114 safety codes permits, 37 were electrical permits, 12 were plumbing permits, 64 were gas permits, and one was a septic permit. 311 inspection reports were also completed. The average time to issue is 34 days per septic permits, and electrical, plumbing, and gas permits are issued the same day. Realtor reports were completed within 1.5 days. Of the 50 address signs that were ordered, 29 were picked up with an average turnaround time being three weeks. Of the 17 new non-compliance reports received in Q1, 11 have been resolved, and we sent out 49 satisfaction surveys in Q1 and received nine responses. The majority of responses received were satisfied to very satisfied. Next slide. The area structure plan drafts for Moose Lake and Chicken Hill have been finalized, and public engagement is held in February of 2024. Draft documents have been created for the Crane Lake and Area 55 area structure plans. The initial research stage for the Crane Lake and Highway 55 area structure plans has been completed, and an informational package and survey was distributed to properties in the ASP area. Yeah, that's good. Desktop review was conducted to identify and categorize all municipal and environmental reserves in the MD to determine a course of action for installing informative signage in higher-density lakefront multi-lot subdivisions as part of the municipal lands bylaw education project. An informative bulletin was also created as part of the 2024 tax notice insert. StanTech Consulting was awarded the Land Use Bylaw Review and Update Project. We are currently in the review and research stage of the project. Open houses took place May 8th and 9th to introduce the project to residents and stakeholders and to gather community input. Thanks. This concludes the Q1 report for Planning and Development, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, Deputy Reeve Crick?
It says there are eight, eight new housing starts this quarter. Do you know what the comparative was for last year of that quarter?
I don't have that information. I can, we can revisit that in the next meeting if required.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good morning, Shannon. Good morning, Reeve and council. I am going to present you the core report for asset management. So at a glance, we did present the waste service to council in the last quarter, and we are in roughly 40% completed of parks and recreation. So you can see that we are 85% of campgrounds, 10% trails, 50% rinks, 30% respectively for playgrounds and boat launch and docks, and some sports field capture there. We are also in a registration data collection. We have, as we said, we did the waste system, service site, we did 100%. We are 85% on waste line and sewer line systems, and we are in the process of reconciling our road data with our GIS system. And we did present the asset retirement obligations in the 2023 annual financial statement. If you want to, next, we did do some training. The IAMA Small Community Learning Groups was really successful. We had roughly five employees attend some workshops and learning groups. We had two employees basically watch and participate in a data webinar for Next Gen 911, and we did do an exchange of ideas with the town of Stony Plain. Our GIS team, me and Drew, went to meet with their GIS team, and we exchanged some great ideas. I took some stuff from them and they took some stuff from us. And then we had a risk management workshop where roughly nine employees attended, and that was great, just learning about risk management and how we can mitigate some of those things. And then GIS at a glance, we completed nine, or sorry, 11 paper maps, as long as three dashboards and one story map, which you guys seen in the waste management system. We made some form surveys in Quick Capture around six, and we serviced 10 departments. Our ongoing project is our 2024 land ownership map. We are 90% done. We have administration building staff. It's 100% done, but this is one thing that's kind of ongoing. As staff move offices or they leave or are hired, that changes, and it's pretty quick turnaround, usually within a week. We are 40% in the waste service interpretation interactive map, and we are, like I said in the past slide, we are 50% reconciled with our road and our GIS system. Basically, do we have the right surface? Do we have the right speed limit? That kind of stuff. And then we are 50% in our emergency prepared service response map. So what this is, is that I believe emergency services working on evacuation maps if we have an emergency in an area, and the GIS team is working with them. Once they get all their stuff, showing maps of exits and muster points and stuff like that. And that is it for me. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Sure.
There's a little turquoise car ripping around in my area. Is that for us? Is there a GIC car ripping around in our area?
It's, it's not us.
It's not us, yeah.
So it could be Google. Usually they announce, and, but that is, we have not hired anyone to take any video.
Looks like they're looking for twisters almost away.
Oh, maybe.
Great big bald on a little, little car, and he's ripping around.
Yeah, not hired by us. Could be a private company that wants to sell some Dana soon, so we're, we're not sure, so.
Right on. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none? Okay, thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Good morning, Reeve and council. It's my pleasure this morning to present the First Quarter Economic Development Report, Economic Development at a Glance. We, I was participated in 13 meetings, was involved in, in one lead generation, advanced one project, had one training session, had nine business visits, and attended two events. Next slide, please. Business and Industry Growth Strategy, which is basically our raison d'etre, our marching orders. So we continue ongoing with our business registry program. Economic development web design has been completed. I will be presenting a, a report on, update on that later. The business visitation program is ongoing. The value proposition has been completed. The Investment Attraction Action Plan, it will be underway shortly as we applied for and received a grant from the provincial government, the Enred Grant. We completed or participated in an ACP grant for a commercial industrial property listing. That grant has been approved, and we'll be working with the lead agent on that, the County of Vermillion River, through our cooperation and collaboration with the hub as well. Business Attraction, Retention Expansion Program is ongoing. Our community profile or economic dashboard has been complete, and we're involved with as well an unmanned aerial vehicle program through the SCOOP grant, and that's also through our relationship with the hub. We continue to, we are ongoing initiatives, the economic development collaboration. We work with Invest Alberta and Invest Canada for Lead Generation. That's ongoing. We continue to identify shovel ready, ready projects as well. From a brand development perspective, continue to work on communication materials and the MD Ambassador Champion Program. There's a policy pending for that. That'll, that'll come to council hopefully in, in the near future, and support rebranding when, when necessary and as needed. Economic Development Newsletter has, comes out quarterly. The first quarter, one was delivered, and the second quarter is actually in development and just being proofread, and hopefully will be distributed in the next week or so. Opportunities continue for council to be part of our business growth as well. That's ongoing. From a Lead Generation perspective, in the first quarter- That's ongoing from a lead generation perspective in the first quarter. We worked with Invest Alberta on an eco-farm, uh, proposal, uh, that involved, um, a significant amount of, um, uh, access to, um, alfalfa, and, um, we were part of what would have been seventy communities in Alberta that were asked to participate. We were, uh, one of only thirteen that actually responded to that, and we haven't, uh, we haven't received closure on that project, so there's still information pending there. Uh, from a training perspective, uh, worked with, uh, Gold and Shovel, an organization, uh, that presented to us key trends in economic development websites. From a meetings perspective, met, continued to meet with, uh, Cold Lake and Bonneville Realtors and Brokers, Community Futures, Invest Alberta, Bonneville Centralized High School, Notre Dame High School, Portage College, The Economic Developers of Alberta, Connect for Food, Alberta Hub, Bonneville and District Chamber of Commerce, the Regional, uh, Economic Information Program, uh, which is a sharing program between, uh, the Chambers of Commerce, Community Futures, uh, the Town of Bonneville, and the City of Cold Lake. We have client meetings, uh, we had, uh, specific meetings with, uh, uh, clients involved in ag tourism and World Pulp, and, and, uh, one of those clients was actually, uh, recommended to move forward, uh, with some investment through, um, the regional innovation program that is covered in our area, which is located in Lloydminster. From an events perspective, attended the Department of National Defense Procurement Program, and the Canadian Manufacturers Exporters Roundtable, which we hosted here in Lloydminster in March. And for major projects, we continue to work on the Site Link Program, and, uh, we have an organizing, organizing committee that has, um, met once and will meet again, um, today shortly after our meeting, and I'd just like to bring you, uh, up to date. Um, the, the event for Site Link is September eighteenth to twentieth, uh, for individuals, uh, in economic development, elected officials, and those supporters, uh, of development such as, uh, engineers, utilities, and other service providers. There will be, uh, this will be a three-day event, where it'll be training, workshops, and best practices of trends and investment traction. There'll also be an opportunity for us as the MD to host our site selector presenters on a one-day tour throughout, throughout the MD on the twenty-first, which will highlight some of our major employers and our subdivisions, as well as, uh, activities that'll be happening at the airport. The major stops on the tour will include, uh, the Nabye Plant with Imperial, and also, uh, CFB Cold Lake, and throughout the day, we'll stop at two major subdivisions as well, and tour the countryside and identify some of our opportunities for value-added agriculture. Our key focus for this event will be the energy sector, proteins, agriculture, technology, renewable technologies, Canadian forces procurement, and logistics. The event will also include opportunities, uh, not only for site selectors to make presentations, but, um, key networking opportunities for individuals such as elected officials and, uh, developers to meet one-on-one with our site selectors that are coming in from across North America. That is my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this point.
I know one thing, someone has a pretty good base in their vehicle. Uh, any questions, gentlemen? Okay, seeing none, thank you for your report, appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Good morning, Mr. Reven Council.
Morning.
I'm here to present the first quarterly report for the Parks and Rec Department. Uh, some of the key highlights we had this year, different from the last year, is our, uh, our hiring, our new staff. We, uh, switched over from, uh, caretakers in the majority of our campgrounds over to campground maintenance and guest relations personnel that we have out there. That being said, we've, uh, pretty much doubled in, uh, in size in staffing. Uh, we did over sixty interviews for the seasonal staff. Our new core staff now, we are up to forty-nine people. That's a mix of, uh, full-time and, and seasonal staff members. We still do have two caretakers that are out there. Our Cold Lake Campground has a set of caretakers out there, and our Wolf Lake Campground has caretakers as well, uh, as well, who are, uh, third-party contractors. Uh, the Visitors Information Center, attendance by the month, it was, was pretty even. We had the same amount of people coming in each month, not much there, uh, changed. Um, we did also have three large external bookings, uh, events that were held at the VIC Center. Uh, the Oilman's Family Fun Day, we had some medical doctors, students come up, and then the UCP, uh, United Conservative Party, uh, Premier Daniel Smith was also, uh, in attendance. We have several projects that are still ongoing. Some of them soon to be closed. The VIC Building retrofit building, we, uh, we're doing some doors, uh, we, uh, still have a set of stairs that we're looking at doing. Uh, Vezzo Beach Phase Two, uh, if you've noticed the fence around the Vezzo Beach Campground, it's, uh, it's in disrepair here, and now we're going to be trying to replace that one. Uh, Lacory Rec Park Development, we are doing a picnic shelter up there. It's ninety percent complete. We're just pouring a concrete pad, and then that one will be off our books. Uh, Cold Lake MD Park Boat Launch, uh, engineering and design is soon to be completed right now, and we'll be putting that out to tender. Chicken Hill Boat Dock, uh, in this report, the Chicken Hill, uh, Boat Dock, the materials were just ordered, and has since, uh, been installed, and, uh, but again, that was done in April outside of this report. Cold Lake Shower Building, uh, we currently now have an RFP out for a design build of a new shower building going into Cold Lake. That was just the engineering so far done on that one, or the, uh, the tender process, sorry. Cold Lake Picnic Shelter, uh, right now, that is just in concept design, but is one that we want to, uh, replace, an old one that is in the Cold Lake Campground as well. For our next slide, the, uh, over the winter, we had a very odd winter this year, uh, not a lot of snow, as you're all, uh, aware of. Uh, so our paved trails, we did maintain the paved trails whenever we did get snowfall, we were out cleaning those off. The number of people that are using the trails, it varies, uh, depending on the site of the, uh, the trackers that are out there, but compared to last year's quarter to report of 2023, it's pretty much the exact same. It's the same number of people are using those trails. Our Nordic skiing, we didn't get that open this year until February the eighth, which is very late, very late in the year that opened. It was just because of the snowfall. We did not have the snowfall this year, and as you can see by the stats there, it was closed on March twenty-second, so it was only in operation for about a month and a half this winter. Uh, and that was just for the safety of the people and not a lot of snow. Outdoor rinks, again, because of the warm weather, it was, uh, it was a struggle for our staff to maintain the ice out there. Not any different than the city of Cold Lake as well, they, they were struggling as well. Everybody in the area that had a rink was struggling for that. We did manage to get them open before the Christmas break. Uh, we didn't have lines on the ice, so we did get a few people asking the question why, why we didn't have lines put down. Uh, the, uh, the reason behind that, again, warm weather couldn't build the ice. They managed to go as far as April the fifth in Ardmore, then the sun got on the, on the ice and started to melt it, the ice, not making them safe, so we had to shut them down. Uh, April the eleventh in Cherry Grove, Fort Kent, just because of the, uh, the nature of that ice rink, it was March twenty-ninth, that's an, uh, exposed ice rink. Next slide, please. So under our grants, we had council giving, there was eight requests, there was three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars funded. The community action grants, on the March fifteenth intake, there was a request for three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, and we awarded a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That was through, uh, eleven applications that came in, and eight recipients, uh, were awarded the, uh, the funding, one being a major capital, four being moderate, and three being event and program. And then our last slide that we have, just want to bring to attention forty-one requests for the donation sponsorship and recognition. Uh, there was twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, awarded or funded in that category. Uh, five thousand nine hundred dollars in kind or promo items and vouchers that were given out, not cash, but this could have been free camping, or, or an ice cream ticket, or whatever, whatever need be. Just for information, uh, wasn't part of this report, but April the first was the, the cutoff date, I guess, for this report. Uh, I just want to give you a heads up on the campground bookings that were out there. We are up this year for the number of bookings. Last year, we were five hundred and eighty-nine people that were booked on April the first. Uh, that was our first opening day of the, uh, of the campgrounds. This year, that jumped up to six hundred and sixty-seven bookings this year. So, uh, it, it is increasing, the number of campers that we have out there, which is, uh, is positive, very positive for us.
Did, did they all book in Muriel Lake?
They didn't all book in Muriel Lake. We have her too down there.
Yes, Counselor Scarsen.
Yeah, so just, uh, to do with the maintenance on the paved trails, have you been, have you discussed with, um, I guess maybe the TNU department or whoever about, like, doing some crack filling, because seen some areas that have had some big cracks and some weeds growing through them, so, you know, we spend a lot of money on them, we should probably maintain them a bit?
Through the reef? Yes, um, we have. I have been talking to Mr. Ryan Peash from over in TNU, uh, try to get onto his program. We want to try to jump in with TNU so that we can keep the cost down for the, for the service itself. So that is something that we're looking into, uh, potentially for next year. It, uh, wasn't in the budget for this year.
All right, hopefully more than potentially for next year, so.
Uh, yeah, Counselor, uh, here, Counselor Krajak, please?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I had several concerns about no caretaker at Mini Lake with regards to issues happening after eleven PM. So the seasonal staff, how often are they there, and what hours?
So Mini Lake, oh, through, uh, through the reef, Mini Lake, we do have, uh, a park attendant there onsite, and we have maintenance there onsite as well.
Oh, there is?
We, we, uh, every day.
Twenty-four hours a day?
Uh, not twenty-four hours a day. What we had done this year is we have a security personnel that are out there. They, the security personnel, they start at seven o'clock in the evening, and they travel around from site to site that does not have a caretaker in there. They work till three-thirty in the morning. So we do have a time period from three-thirty in the morning till seven in the, in the morning, where we don't have somebody onsite, but usually at that time, we have no issues there.
Thank you.
Counselor Swager?
Mr. Reeve? Yeah, can you just clarify that again? So you, uh, you don't have campground attendants now, you're trying a different process, and, but then you mentioned security. So do you have more than one security person that goes to all the different campsites, or how are you doing that?
So through the reef, all council again, last year, we had caretakers. So we had a, a third-party contractor that we had hired to look after our campground, right?
Right, yeah.
Twenty-four seven, they were onsite. So this year, we have park attendants that are MD staff, we're hired MD staff, that are on the campsite as well to take bookings and guest relations, and then whatever services that we need to provide to our campers. So the park attendant is there onsite. We also have a maintenance crew onsite that is MD staff. They are in that campground throughout the day. In the evenings, when they go home, uh, we have a security personnel that shows up at seven o'clock. The park attendant leaves at nine. We have security personnel that show up at seven o'clock, but they bounce from campground to campground. They are doing a rotating. So what they do is when the security personnel shows up at seven o'clock, they talk, talk to the park attendants and ask, how many people do you have? Do you see any issues that's going to happen today? Uh, what should I be looking out for? Uh, they get a little bit of a briefing in the two-hour period where there's an overlap between staff members, and then they go about their nightly duties, I guess, or, or rounds.
So, Mr. Reeve, how many security personnel do we have?
Two.
Oh, two.
And, Mr. Reeve, I'd add, I'd add a question from pickleball people about painting lines in Ardmore for pickleball. Is there, is there something that they have to do, or just go ahead and paint lines? I'm not sure.
You mean in the, in the rink?
Yeah.
In the rink? Through the reef, that would have to be, we'd have to have discussions with the Ardmore Community Society as well on that, uh, because they are the ones that are maintaining that, uh, that rink right now. We do the major repairs and things, but it would have to be a discussion that we would sit down with them as well.
Okay, sure, because it'd be nice to, like, there's been, you know, discussion about pickleball, but hasn't moved, so, yeah, that'd be nice to have that discussion, I guess, with.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah. So is this system working well, you think?
Again, this is our first year.
Yeah, yeah.
Doing this, and we're very early in the season. So far, we haven't had any issues. Uh, it's been running fairly smoothly for us. Uh, that being said, like I say, it's, we're very early in the season, we don't really have a lot of campers out there right now, so, yeah.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, so with that, uh, administration is requesting a motion from council to accept the Planning and Community Services first quarterly report as information.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead. Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Uh, just prior, uh, uh, to council, um, uh, giving consideration to that motion, I just want to point out one thing that council, that all of council may not be aware of, or some councilmen might not be aware of. For the last six weeks, we've been providing, uh, executive director services to the C2 Center. Uh, this is the last week of it, and I just wanted to publicly say thank you to Ian, who has taken on the role with the departure of the executive director of the C2 Center approximately six or seven weeks ago. Uh, the, the reports we get back from the C2 Board is that they are very pleased, uh, with the work and the way that, uh, the MD jumped in and, uh, looked after that. I also want to say thank you to Dave, although Ian was the one who went over to the C2. We couldn't have allowed that to happen if we didn't have another outstanding person out at Kinesu and Dave, who looked after, and we kind of dropped Kinesu on him on his own for the six weeks. So, uh, just a big shout out to both Ian and Dave, uh, for, uh, for, uh, jumping in to help out when the executive director, uh, left at the, at the C2 Center.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Yes, go ahead.
Question about, a little bit of discussion about Muriel Lake. We've kind of talked about in the past about trying to extend or trying to offer long-term camping or something to boost the usage out there. Is there something in the works still to do something in Muriel?
Uh, through the reef, we are actually working with, uh, marketing to put something together. Uh, we are, um, hopefully going to have something a little bit flashy-ish, uh, within the next, uh, month or two, so we are working on that.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, guys. Uh, one, uh, one for taking over the, the C2, and one for staying home. Um, I, I sit on that board at, uh, C2, and, uh, you did an amazing job for coming in, uh, blindfolded, kind of thing, so I got to give you a lot of credit there, and thank you for taking up the slack, the other guy that had to stay home. Appreciate it, both of you. All right, I'm looking for a motion. Yes, uh, Counselor Fidev makes a motion that council accepts Planning and Community Services 2024 First Quarterly Report as information. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And we're going to break for lunch right after. That's Carrie, thank you.